All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of Sunbury Council Meeting. It is November nineteenth, twenty twenty five, seven thirty P M. Would you please join me in a moment of silent prayer and the pledge of allegiance?
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Call please.
Mayor Saint John?
Here.
Sir Capel?
Here.
Mr. Drayer?
Here.
Mr. Ghost?
Here.
Mr. Grumney?
Here.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yeah.
Seven present, me and Coram.
Good deal. We did have a meeting on November fifth, and we're looking for a motion to approve the minutes.
Still moved.
A motion by Mrs. Cooper?
Second.
Second by Mr. Martin. Discussion? Call.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Grumney?
Yes.
Mr. Ghost?
Yes.
Mayor Saint John?
Yes.
Mr. Drayer?
Yes.
Mr. Capel?
Yes.
Seventy eight minutes passed.
All right, we do have a couple of scheduled visitors, and then we'll open it up to the public. First, I'd like to introduce Mr. Richard Doherty. Also, we know him as Dick Doherty. If you could come up to the podium, I just have something that I'd like to read. Mr. Doherty is a special individual in our community, but also in our nation, and I think it's important that we recognize Mr. Doherty here tonight. So this is a press release from American Legion Post four fifty seven in Sunbury. Richard A. Doherty, a member of the American Legion Post four fifty seven in Sunbury, Ohio, was inducted into the Ohio Veterans Hall of Fame class of two thousand and twenty five. The ceremony was held at the Fawcett Center at Ohio State University, where Ohio Governor Mike DeWine presented certificates and medals to twenty of Ohio's outstanding veterans. This prestigious award is bestowed on veterans from all branches of military service who have gone above and beyond in service to their community after their military career. Richard is a founding member of the Ohio Fallen Heroes Memorial in Sunbury and worked over sixteen hundred volunteer hours to help build this outstanding memorial dedicated to honor all Ohio service members lost in the war on terrorism. He also served as a volunteer at Mott's Military Museum in Groveport, Ohio, where his expert craftsmanship and military historical knowledge helped build this outstanding museum. Richard, I'm gonna call you Dick, if that's okay. Dick has served as sergeant at arms for post four fifty seven for over thirty years and served as guardian on several honor flights for Central Ohio veterans as well as on the ground crew. Richard is a true patriot and spent countless hours in volunteering in area schools to educate students on the sacrifices veterans have made to protect our country and preserve our way of life. He has served on the Delaware County Veterans Association Honor Guard, which provides military funeral services for local deceased veterans. He has also served on the Sunbury Police and Fire Departments for many years, as well as a coach for several and as a coach for several of his children's sports teams. Glenn Doherty, not your brother or relative, commander of the American Legion Post four fifty seven, said, "Richard Dick Doherty exemplifies selfless service to his community and nation." Doherty also said he is pleased to see Dick join Robert W. Burr as the second post four fifty seven member of this elite group of veterans. With that said, we'd like to honor you tonight. Thank you. I'd like to ask Mr. Doherty if he would like to say anything. The floor is yours for as long as you'd have it, and afterwards, we'd love to get some pictures with you. But the floor is yours, Mr. Doherty. Thank you.
I read that, and I'd have to wonder, is that really me?
It is.
Yeah. We moved up to the Trent Township in sixty eight, and one of the first things I did after I got out of the service, the whole police department was fully commissioned officers, but they were all part time. And then Mayor Kentner kind of conned me a little bit during the police school, where he told me it was not an auxiliary position. It was a fully commissioned position. So that's where I actually started all of this stuff that led up to that. And without my three girls, probably would have never gotten that because of bulk of that was with working with the schools and the band and watching John Splitfoot be in the wrong place. Still, yeah. No, it's a, I didn't see it coming. And it's a very humbling thing when you look at the other applicants that that their bios read. So it's, and it's still very humbling to be there. Well, I, I thank you for having me in and appreciate the honor.
It's our honor. Our pleasure. I'd like to ask if any of our council members would like to say anything as well.
Just very well deserved. Thank you for your service.
I appreciate that.
Really appreciate it, everything you've done.
Thank you.
I just like say, Mr. Doherty, I mean, you've represented this community very well, not only as a community member, as a father, as a veteran. So just thank you for being such a good person.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, see, I have one more, and we're gonna get a picture with you, Mr. Doherty. Just wanna say, you know, the Ohio Fallen Heroes Memorial is unlike any other memorial in the state, and we're blessed, humbled, honored to have it within the city. And many of us who had nothing to do with bringing it here, I want to thank you and everybody who did. Because, you know, it's the ultimate honor that we have to bear. And just want to say that sacrifice that our veterans have have made, you've honored them and you've honored our community. So thank you. Like to get a picture. All right, next guest that we have is Tracy Whitaker from the Delaware Public Health District. Floor is yours.
Hard act to follow. Thank you so much for your service, sir. Just real quick, a couple of things from the Health Department. We do have a location here for string light recycling. So if you want to get rid of your old string lights, municipal buildings where you can drop those off here. And then we just became a new location for the diaper bank, the United Way sponsors, their strength in families. We are only giving away newborn to three sized diapers, but we are collecting them as well. I just learned that the other day during our clinic hours. So other than that, we're just on our way out of flu season, hopefully, and numbers are steady. Not a lot of hospital patients, knock on wood. So if you all have any questions for me, happy to answer them.
Any questions for the Health District? Thank you for being here this evening. Take care.
Thanks, Tracy.
And we may have seen some of the recycled lights. We actually have locations at our municipal building.
Is that right there in the parking lot back in the back?
No, it's in our lobby. That one, in the back, those red cans are just for regular recycling. In our lobby is a specially marked can for the lights.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda, visitor section. Does anybody from the public wish to speak with City Council? All right, we're on to committee reports. Ms. Drayer?
I do not have any tonight.
All right, Mr. Grumney?
I do. Thank you. We had a finance committee meeting this evening. It was recorded, so if you want on the dirty details, you can certainly go back and watch every minute of it. I'll be brief on my update. We did review the two thousand and twenty six budget. We have a first reading tonight to start the approval process. We did talk about two thousand and twenty six wage and salary ordinance. We're adding a few new positions in two thousand and twenty six, a new police officer. As we continue to enforce a revenue generating tactic, which is permits, we have a specialist in line to help us manage that process, and then also a part time mayor court administrator. We talked about a quarterly investment review. All things are on track. Our investments are good. Cybersecurity program, it looks like we're gonna partner, co-pilot a program with a company called DataServe, which will help us meet the January two thousand and twenty six deadline by the government that cities have a cybersecurity program in place. We have the bones of that, but we're gonna use this company to help us fine tune and get better prepared in the event of a cyber incident. We have a Rita mailing that has a postcard that has gone out to some of the newer developments to inform people that unfortunately they are part of a Rita district and need to get acquainted with her quickly. And then we also talked about some year-to-date comparison reports and our typical checks and bank to book reconciliation. I would also like, only because it was mentioned during this meeting, as we talked about budget, but Wesley Hirschberger, who works in our wastewater plant, recently got his Class Two Wastewater Operator designation, which from what I understand is not an easy thing to do, and he's done that. So congratulations to Wesley, and I'm glad we have him on staff to to help with that process. Yeah, so congratulations to him. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Grumney. Mr. Capel?
Nothing for me tonight. Mrs. Cooper?
Yes, we had an events meeting last evening, and one of the things we talked about was the Patriots Memorial Update, which I've told you about before, is through the Daughters of the Revolution, and we're working with the City of Delaware and Powell to do a memorial for, how is it? All the wars that are unmarked graves?
Yeah, it's primarily the Revolutionary War, but yeah, there are some early wars there where, yeah, they've
Everything of World War Two.
Yeah, true. But if a site has been identified for an individual, they would not be. This is really a monument for people who are not have an unmarked grave at this point. Yeah.
Mr. Capel has been working with their planning team, and he presented sort of some different options of what the memorials might look like. They're still working through that, and we're working through where it might go. But if you're curious of what we're thinking it might look like, let me know. We can get you pictures, and that's still an ongoing process. And then the bulk of the meeting was really about the special event permit policy application, and I've been talking about this with you guys, and it's on in our new business tonight, but I'm just gonna talk about it now since I'm in the events update. We've been going through this policy and just making a few changes. Some of it is just formatting, and then some of it is changing parts of it. For example, after talking to our police department, we increased what we're charging for a special duty officer if you need one for an event, some things like that. There's a red lined, yellow highlighted version in your packet. I would appreciate it if everyone could take the time over the next two weeks to read it over. Mr. Hennessy would really like to get this passed in this calendar year so that it can be effective January of two thousand and twenty six. It will affect our rentals, and there's some things that he would really like to get to start the new year off. Another main thing in this is it sort of pre-identifies annual events that we have every year. For example, the Memorial Day Flea Market, the Fourth of July festivities, Labor Day, and Christmas on the Square. And this, if it would pass, would say that those particular street closures would not have to go to council if they're doing exactly what they've always done every year, and it would still go through the Services, Police, Fire, and Staff Events Committee and Parks Committee if Parks is part of that, like for the, and it also, we already had pre-identified parade routes that sort of does that, and the new ones with the big nut straw and so, but everything is highlighted for you to read. So if you wouldn't mind giving that a read over the next two weeks, if you have any questions, you could reach out to me or Mr. Hennessy. That's about it for the events. Thank you.
Thank you. On the pre-approved, like rinse and repeat events, maybe we can just consider looking at hours and days. So I know there's sometimes, like, sizzle comes to mind.
Sizzle's not included in that?
Perfect.
Should have mentioned that.
It's okay. And then maybe with July fourth, just being a little more prescriptive on like the time that we're gonna close roads.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Perfect. Thanks.
And these events would still, they'd still be discussed at council. They're just not going to council for a new closure.
Yeah, understood. Thanks.
Yep.
All right.
Mr. Martin? Player board met last Thursday, and things are right on schedule with the new fire station on Wilson Road.
Right along.
Station number two.
Yeah, that's for April, isn't it? This opening?
The end of March, yeah, is what they said that night, but there, things are coming along. They're at that point where they're inside working, so it doesn't look like much is happening, but there's a whole lot happening. And the chief and the assistant chief go out there every day, and they actually said there have been a couple of times when contractors couldn't find the piece of equipment they needed to use that day if we're getting ready to leave, and the chief would help them find it. And they'd get their job done. So, but the chief and the assistant chief have been very, very attentive of what's going on out there, and it's coming right along.
Good deal.
So it was a good meeting.
It's awesome. Can I tag on to that? Something somewhat related, but has nothing to do with the public, other than they're just neighbors. Heard from an unverified source today, breaking news, Camping World is opening at the first of the year. Unverified source.
As Camping World?
There were people in there working today.
Already, yes.
Unverified.
Already.
See that from me.
Yeah. Down here, Mr. Mayor. All right, thank you very much. All right, next item on the agenda is the police report. Deputy Chief Wade, here, council.
So I get to bear the bad news on the vehicles, the two Silverado trucks that we have, the twenty threes. It's a known issue with some of the Chevy stuff we went through with the Tahos. We've been in contact with Lally up in Warren that's helping us work through this. It's all warranty stuff, oil usage and electrical issues. The trucks were working to get them up to Craig Smith and Galleon, who has been recommended by Lally, they're a little closer, forty minutes away instead of two and a half hours away, a little over two hours away. So hopefully those will be back in service here soon. Officers are finishing up their continued professional training. We just finished up our weapons platforms, all of the weapons platforms, all the officers were requalified on those. They're finishing up their continued professional training now. It's required by the state of Ohio. The ballistic shields, you'll see one here. We were able to secure three of those as one of the budget items that we had interest in for this year. These are rifle rated shields, provide protection to the officers in the open. I think it's pretty evident in today's time with what you see in the news media and everywhere around that officers are taking fire, so.
Can you turn it around so we can see how it's held on to and everything we have to?
Yeah.
Please.
The finance director will do that. How heavy is that?
Eighty pounds?
Sixteen pounds.
Yeah, you're just so strong, Vina.
Kind of material.
Wow. Kevlar?
It is. It's various pressed kevlar. It's rifle rated, so. Whereas, you know, a lot of the vests and different things that we wear don't have as much level of protection that this provides to the officers. So we were able to get three of those secured from a company in Berea, Ohio.
Free with you thirty pounds.
No money. I love show and tell. Did you break?
How much? What's the retail cost on that DC weight?
Those are roughly five thousand dollars apiece, and the business of which we were able to do with the company, we got about seven hundred dollars each shield off. So it was a company that I was able to do work with over the years in Northern Ohio.
So that'll stop in a nine millimeter round?
That'll stop at three oh eight.
Wow, okay.
Seven six two, seven five five six. So again, with officers, you know, on behalf of the police department, the officers will thank the citizens for this and the ability to be able to get some of this secured, the protection for the officers, it goes without saying, and the community, so that we can do our job. Unfortunately, there's people out there that want to do harm to the officers. They're just simply doing their job, and this offers them a level of protection.
How many of those did you get?
Three.
Okay, thanks.
Yes. So lastly, conditional officer, our part-time officer, Brian Newsom, he's been with us since July. He has been received a conditional officer from the chief to go to full time. He comes to us from Mauro County with twenty years of experience. Brian has got a lot of on-the-ground type experience, so he's been provided a conditional officer offer from the chief. We look forward to seeing how this goes, and if all goes right, he should be started December first. And with that, I can take any questions?
Any questions? All right, I just wanted to provide a brief update on the FOP negotiations, so you may recall that this is the end of the initial three-year term. At this point, we're at an impasse with the bargaining unit, and we are, it's part of the process that we're assigning, finding a fact finder, fact finding. It's a natural part of the process. Just wanted to keep council up to speed. Right, any questions for Deputy Chief? Next item on the agenda is the administrators' report.
All right, just wanted to give the council an update on where we stand with filling vacancies. So we're actively recruiting candidates for the city council seat that will be vacated at the end of the year, Ms. Drayer's seat. In here, I've indicated we've received five applications from residents, eligible residents. This continues to be, I've got the names of the individuals in there if you're interested, but we still have another week to go. And I know others are at least exploring the possibility of adding their name to the list. So we'll be back at the next meeting to at least provide a full list and then strategize a little bit more about the process that you'll use to fill those vacant, that vacancy. On the boards and commissions front, I do have a table in the administrators' report. It shows all the applications that we've received to date, and I've tried to identify the boards and commissions of interest to the applicants. So at this point, we've got seven applicants for eleven positions, multiple candidates for certain positions. Again, we continue to receive applications and still have another week for this to be, for us to receive applications. So same type of thing, we'll bring the full list to you in December and begin the process, or figure out the process moving forward. The only other item I was gonna reference in the report is the community, the Joint Economic Development District meeting that happened last week. Thank you to all the residents who showed up for that event. We think we had over ninety people in the room for that, a good cross-section of the communities that are part of the J R D and also other communities in the eastern Delaware County area. What is not in the report, and I just learned today, is to date, we have received over nine hundred responses to the survey, yeah, which is amazing. The Pizzuti team is thrilled.
When are they closing that?
So no date yet in terms of closing it.
Mr. Grumney needs to fill his out.
Yes. I would anticipate it'll be sometime in mid-December. So they're kind of monitoring the level of activity at this point. Once it maybe starts to slow down a little bit, we'll do one more announcement to collect any last minute filers and then close it down. And then there'll be another, we anticipate another survey would happen a little bit later, once they're ready to talk a little bit more about, you know, the types of amenities, i.e. services, that could be in a center based upon the early results. So there, again, there'll be another opportunity to kind of provide some additional feedback on that. Of the roughly, of the over nine hundred applicant, or of the nine hundred survey respondents, over eighty percent of those have come from residents in Sunbury, Galena, and Berkshire. So there are individuals filling it out who are not in the geographic boundary, but, which is great. So we're also hearing from folks around here, but the vast majority of them are coming from the jurisdictions of the J R D, so. And that's it, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Any questions for Mr. Hennessy?
Full say, listen to that hearing, that Berkshire Township hearing online, the YouTube, it's very, very good. You can hear it well, so.
Oh, good. Yeah, I'm happy to hear that.
I can hear it fine.
Can you hear the beginning?
Yeah, I heard.
Did you hear the end?
I got it all.
Could you tell how hot it was inside there?
It's so warm in that building.
Eighty-six degrees. That's what it felt like, right?
Yeah.
But it was amazing. Yeah, we had a lot of people.
Yeah, it was good.
Yeah, I should add the J R D meets again on December first in this room at six o'clock, so.
We anticipate doing another community meeting after the holidays, after the new year.
Think, yeah, we were just talking about when that date might be, probably late January-ish. But yeah, we'll let you know.
It's probably cold at that one. We'll all be in t-shirts. It'll be cold.
See who, the survival of the fittest. Good deal. All right. This is Odebravsky. It's your floor, and this is the engineers' report.
Yes, page eleven, but also it's a two-page report on page twelve. The first item I want to give an update on will be the Columbus Street parking lot, and there's a drone footage on page, a drone photo on page twelve, so you can see that aerial photo. Doesn't have the packet. I know, in the future, I'll get a power tweet together. For anybody who's been by the lot at night during construction, I've been up here explaining that the lights are delayed. While the lights came in, they've been installed and they are now functioning. So as soon as the supplier was able to deliver the product, we now have a lit lot. There has been a slight delay on the pavers that are associated with the installation of the lot, so that would be the permeable pavers that are going to collect the stormwater, but also be the surface for parking. They thought they were gonna come in around the second week of December. I made some phone calls today, and they're moving some things around, and they're going to start installation of the pavers on Monday. And if weather cooperates, they will have enough pavers in stock, and they plan to have it completed on December fifth, which is a key date because it would be great to have it showcased for our Christmas on the square. But lines might not be painted, but it should start to look really great out there. So we'll have the lights on. We should have pavers down. And they're working on putting in the landscaping around the area as well. So please, please pray for some good water.
Let's take a break and do that one.
Design update. Jer Smith Park, we have the one hundred percent design plans in. They are advertising the bid documents on Saturday, so that will be in the newspaper. We'll also reach out to parties that could be interested in bidding up the project. The bid opening is scheduled for mid-December, so another thing to pray for, the bids for Jer Smith Park. Once you have a contractor on board, we'll work with them on a schedule and have an idea of when the project could be completed. Right now, the bid documents are requesting that the park be substantially complete by the end of July. With that, depending upon the parts and pieces and supply demand, there could be delays on what we request. So we'll see what the contractor says when we get somebody on board. And I wanted to mention, Delco Water has the waterline replacement along Cherry Street. I'm sure everyone who's seen the Um, along Cherry Street, I'm sure everyone has seen the, the construction going on. Uh, Delco had to close down one of the lanes on um, South Miller, south of the Cherry Street intersection. Uh, right next to Pizza Hut because the waterline ended up being just a little bit too close to the roadway. Uh, that closure ended up happening this morning. They had to turn the water off, so um, I understand it. They did the best they could. Uh, schools were notified so that they were aware um, that there could be some, some impacts to traffic in the area. But um, I believe it was fixed and uh, hopefully they're not planning on closing down any other lanes as part of the project. And that's the end of my update, unless people have questions.
Any questions?
That parking lot looks so big in that picture, isn't it?
Yes.
Very cool. I, I love the drone footage, so hopefully I can continue to get that and we can have a few pictures so we can phase the construction. And you can see what we started with and the end product.
I had a resident today asked like, uh, is it around like thirty spaces, thirty-five, something like that?
So it's twenty-six regular spaces, um, two ABA spaces and it's four, four or five of the um, the golf cart uh, spaces as well. So around thirty spaces.
Think they were getting at, they were like, couldn't we have got a few more out of it? I'm like, I, I don't know, like, I, I feel like it's gonna be pretty nice with. I mean, n- number one, we don't have any storm drain features, like, I mean, we saved a lot of money uh, by doing it that way. I think it's gonna have nice landscaping, some natural, you know, drainage features and like, it's right against the square. I mean, you don't want just a big paved lot, in my opinion.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And we took a very close look at the turning motions because we don't wanna have fender benders in the lot either. Just to make sure people aren't running into the curves and other features in the lot.
So my car is smaller than a golf cart. Can I park in front of those houses?
So you can park anywhere you want. I think we, I gave Dave an honorary like. Thank you for your service on city council. Mayor said so. Excellent. Thank you very much. Alright, next item on the agenda, resolutions, no third, no second. We have a first reading. Resolution number twenty twenty-five dot two-eight, a resolution accepting the roadway safety action plan, safe streets and roads for all presented by Verdantis. And directing city staff to work towards implementing the plan. The plan is in your packet. It was reviewed in detail with the services committee. Anything else you wanna add, Mrs. Obraski or Mr. Hennessy? Any questions? I don't think we're looking to pass this tonight, but we do need to pass it before the end of the year. It's on track to do that. Okay. Alright, ordinance is third reading, um, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dot three zero. An ordinance declaring the improvement to a certain parcel of real property to be of, of public purpose and exempt from taxation. Establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund and providing for the collection and deposit of service payments into that fund specifying the public infrastructure improvements directly benefiting the parcel and declaring an emergency. Uh, Mr. Hennessy, did you want to provide a little bit of detail on this?
Yeah, so this is um, Golden Eagle Storage, um, you, off of Cherry Street on the west side, or yeah, west side. Um, there's an image in the, in the packet, however, the um, the structures have been built at this point. So seventy-five, ten percent, or seventy-five percent uh, TIF ten-year term, uh, that's permitted by state law. Uh, notice has been provided to the school districts. And uh, yeah, it's ready for passage if the council's ready.
I did speak to the superintendent and the uh, director of finance or school treasurer, excuse me, um, about this one in particular and the need to. Through TIF on this particular development, you may recall we're in the process of realigning Cheshire Road. So where the yellow flashing beacon is, you may get stuck there if anybody's trying to turn left off of Cheshire Road on the Cheshire Street. Pretty dangerous intersection. We're gonna align it with Itachi Astemo, um, their entrance and exit across the street. And uh, they're doing some preliminary work in that area right now. Uh, but this, these TIF dollars will help fund uh, portion of that improvement.
Motion on the emergency.
A motion on the emergency, Mr. Martin.
Second.
Second by Mr. Grumney. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Grumney?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Ghost?
Yes.
Mayor St. John?
Yes.
Mr. Air?
Yes.
Mr. Capel?
Yes.
Seven yeas?
Motion on ordinance twenty twenty-five dot three zero.
A motion on the ordinance, second, second by Mr. Grumney, motion with me by Mr. Martin. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Grumney?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Ghost?
Yes.
Mayor St. John?
Yes.
Mr. Air?
Yes.
Mr. Capel?
Yes.
Seven yeas, motion passes.
Alright, um, should've talked to Mr. Hennessy or Mr. Whitney about this beforehand, but I believe all of the uh, remaining ordinances are reading only second and first. Um, is there any way we can do a consent agenda on this or do I need to read each one of these individually? I can do it. I'll speed read.
I, I, I'll let uh, Mr. Whitney respond to that, but I did wanna say, there is one correction. The ordinance number um, for the um, uh, thirty-four, twenty twenty-five, twenty thirty-four, that does need to be thirty-five. That's a duplicate number, so we'll get that corrected uh, moving forward. But other than that, um, the title's unchanged.
May not be a good mi- mix for it, cause um, consent agenda may be for an approval of all. I'm not sure.
I don't believe we can do that, and that's me spending a bunch of time researching a recipe. No, that's reading room.
Alright, go ahead and get your smartphones out, play your wordball and check Facebook. In reading, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dot three one. An ordinance providing for the issuance of sale of bonds in maximum principal amount of three and a half million dollars. For the purpose of paying for the cost of improving the city's municipal recreational facilities at Jer Smith Park. Including parking areas, walkways, restrooms, playground areas and equipment, multi-use athletic courts, landscaping, a shelter bike trails and a splash pad, together with all necessary, I'm not gonna say that word there too. Ordinance number twenty twenty-five dot three two. An ordinance approving the final plat for Eagle Creek subdivision, section three and declaring an emergency. Still on second readings, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dot three three. An ordinance approving the final plat for Eagle Creek Highlands subdivision, section one and declaring an emergency. Now we're on the first readings, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dot three five.
Yes.
Um, and ordinance, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to accept a right-of-way easement from the Sunbury Development LLC. And the city of Sunbury and declaring an emergency. Uh, just a little bit of background on that one, if you're looking into it, it's the Tim New, Newman property and um, yeah, we're trying to ensure that it's right away and we can reimburse him for the roadway that he built and it's all good stuff. Ordinance number twenty twenty-six dot zero one. An ordinance to approve expenses and other expenditures of the city of Sunbury, Delaware County, state of Ohio. During the fiscal year beginning January first, twenty twenty-six and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. And that is um, the budget of ordinance.
Question. Twenty twenty-six point zero one. It's referring to the year twenty twenty-six.
Sure.
And that, that's because of what is listed here in the, in the last line.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's in our standard numbering system for budget in the past, yes.
Gotcha.
So yeah, the budget is always uh, ordinance number year dot oh one.
First one of the year, yeah. And you have the second one down there looking.
Correct. Wage and salaries. It's a good call out. Alright, ordinance number twenty twenty-six dot oh two. Notenance adopting wage and salary structures for the city of Sunbury for the fiscal year commencing January first, twenty twenty-six. Now I ask anybody that's scrolling on Facebook, playing Wordle or Block Blast to come on. Unfinished business. Um, we have talked about the special event permit policy, rental policy updates. No additional updates. Alright, I just have a few updates and then we'll go around the horn. One, we do have a zoning meeting um, coming up on Monday. The only reason I wanna call this out, there was a um, what do you call it? Controversial development that was brought forward a year or so ago, more than that, right? Blue Stem Development. It's the development that is out in front of the communities of Sunbury. Um, you may recall that there was a gas station that was proposed there. John, you absolutely remember that. Um, well, a lot of work's been done with that particular developer and having community meetings, et cetera. Uh, bottom line is, um, they're bringing forward a new plan, commercial district. Playing commercial district, uh, has a large parcel on the north east side. There's gonna be a large medical facility, really excited about that. Um, I don't think they're going to denote the company's name at this point, but um, very exciting. Hopefully the community can get behind it. And then there's gonna be three other uh, smaller sub lots. One of which is Valvoline oil change and the other two are more like a drive-through. Forget how they classify it, like donut shop, coffee shop, and these are for traffic count purposes. Um.
Yeah, they don't have the users identified for those spaces yet.
Yeah, correct. That parcel lands south of U D F, right? Same side of the street.
That's right.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, it's been open for a while.
Yeah, I think it's about eight acres. That's on rate.
Yeah, it ends up being for medical, the medical use, so.
They're coming to zoning, um.
When is that?
Is that Monday, next Monday?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep. And there's one other item on the agenda that it's the uh, Bell Stores, I believe it's final plat approval. Which is the gas station, which is going to kind of go in and around the area of the uh, Cheshire Road realignment. Um, any questions on those items? Uh, more of an FYI, just if you get any resident feedback, you know, direct that to myself or Mr. Hennessy. Two other items, just really quick. One, I love meeting with uh, Boy Scout group troops and Girl Scout troops and like that. Like that's probably, besides throwing candy in the parade, which is always like my favorite. Um, meeting with kids is like the coolest part of being mayor. And I, I just wanna offer it to any council member, if you would like to ever go with me or if you want to go um, and do it yourself. I mean, please, please do that. The kids have like the best questions. I actually learned some stuff um, from some scouts about like plurality voting versus majority voting. And uh, we had a lot of really good references from the recent election to talk through. And um, I have a lot of questions. Also got a lot of six, seven, which if you have kids in that age group is terribly annoying. But also pretty funny. And I bought a Pinewood Derby car because I was a Boy Scout um, when I was a kid and uh.
Did you buy the car or the block?
Uh, well, yeah, the kit, like to build. So I'm literally gonna build a Pinewood Derby car and I'm gonna go tear that track up.
But the axes, gotta have those axes.
Yeah, I started watching YouTube videos as soon as I got home and I'm like, okay, I know the trick. Rail riding on three wheels, graphite lubricant.
Yes. That's exactly right.
Sorry, I have OCD. Yeah, like that's a problem.
I saw that thing many years ago. We, we worked on that together, long, long time ago.
Yeah.
I still got the, got the winning card of baseball.
Yeah, all the YouTube videos were like, congratulations to the winning dad. Last thing I had, um, huge turnout for the Big Walnut football game last Friday. Uh, I, I was at the game. What an awesome game.
Bananas.
It was crazy. And man, we're a really good football team, like Big Walnut. They're, they're awesome.
Immediate play was like. And then touchdown and then interception and then touchdown. It was like you couldn't keep up. It was nuts. It was awesome and super packed and good weather.
Yeah.
They play in Zanesville.
Correct.
Against Massillon.
Yeah.
Should we beat them last year, so?
Be careful what you say about it.
Alright, good deal. Go, go Eagles. Uh, Ms. Drayer, where's yours?
Um, I would just, I have, was walking this morning and uh, taking the path near my house that goes behind Big Walnut Elementary. You may wanna tell your kids or the school, there's a couple coyotes back there, so tell them, don't pet the doggies.
Yeah, that's good. It's by Dewey? Have Dewey?
Yeah.
Okay. Got it. Thank you very much. Mr. Capel? Mrs. Cooper?
Um, I just wanted to say real quick, you know, part of what goes into being a city council member is we get um, resident feedback all the time. When we're out and trying to do, you know, at a football game or anything like that. And I usually get uh, um, one of three things. I get what's going on in Sunbury here.
Yeah.
I get a complaint about something outside the city of Sunbury.
Yeah.
And then uh, more often than not, I will get someone who knows and respects one of our staff members. And I feel like you get that too, especially with um, Mr. Hennessy. We get that a lot, cause you worked here before and I get it. Um, I'm not gonna embarrass you too much, but I got one this weekend um, from a cheer parent who had worked with Deputy Chief Wade before. And I get it frequently and I'm, I'm, I've been proud to live in Sunbury and I'm proud to serve Sunbury, but I am super proud of our staff. I have never had anyone say, oh, I worked for so-and-so and they were a jerk. I get the best supervisor I ever had. I get super respect him, worked with him for a long time. You guys had a great hire, all the time from our staff. And so I just wanna say, thank you to you guys. It's, it's such a privilege to hear that. It's very cool.
I agree. If you've been around a long time, you may not have heard some of that. So I totally agree, like, staff is A plus. A plus. Good teeth. Cross the board. Good work. Yes. That wasn't a shot at you, Mr. Martin.
Understand.
Nothing down here, sir.
It sounds good. Alright, I think we're looking for a motion.
Motion, motion.
Got a motion to second, second by Mr. Martin. Discussion.
Mr. Ghost?
Uh, he, yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Grumney?
Yes.
Mayor St. John?
Yes.
Mr. Yes, Mr. Capel?
Yes.
Seven yeas, we are.